The mic should be working alright. I re-wired everything this week.
There you go, Geek Squad.
Jack of all trades.
Master of none.
That's great.
So it's only, so it's only told me. Alright, it's 6:30. Call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge to flag.
Pledge and to the flag, and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening, everybody. I first wanted to say, uh, thank you to everybody at the Lions Club and Freedom Rec and anybody else who's involved with the carnival parade and anything else that was going on in last week. Like overall, a lot of people had a lot of good fun. A lot of people from out of town came in and I think it was a good time had by all. So, thank you to all those and everybody that I've missed. Also, the fire police that were here for the carnival from other municipalities. I have asked Andrew to draft a letter to send to all the other volunteers and just expressing our gratitude and thanks to everybody. Public comment? Anybody? One, two, three? Alright, the first item on for the agenda is the crime intervention alarm. Adam?
Yes. Yeah, push that button down there. There you go.
Can I come up through this picture? You guys can go closer. Is enough volume for the recording? Everyone here?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we'll do the portable mic.
I didn't know if he needed his hands free for that.
Okay. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name's Adam with Crime Intervention Alarm. Crime Intervention Alarm is a local company based out of York. We've been in business for a little over 25 years now and we do a wide variety of different security solutions from access control, camera systems, alarm systems, and a lot of, anything that is low voltage, we typically have our hands in. What I wanted to talk about today is a few items. And we'll start with the camera system. That was something that I had gotten a phone call and came out, took a look at the park and we kinda went over the areas that were top priority. And the one thing that I wanted to explain with our systems is that they're non-proprietary, so they're very easy. Whether you decide two years down the road, CIA just isn't doing it for you, you can go somewhere else and they can work on our system. They're not gonna be locked into having to always go with us or throw it out and start all over again. So, it keeps a good gauge for us to make sure that we're doing a good job because at any point in time we could lose customers and we don't want that to happen. So, we do our best with everyone. And it's been working real well for us. And one of the things that you're also going to see with crime intervention is that we have a whole host of knowledge when it comes to our technicians teams. When the job is done, it's not gonna look like an amateur did it. You're not gonna see mirrors that are coming out from the softest of the exterior buildings and you're gonna have a system that's gonna be easy to use and not be in a situation where you're going to feel like you got the short end of the stick as far as the camera system or any other system that we are going to do. So, the system that I'm proposing for the park is going to have approximately 30 days worth of video recording and it's HD recording. There's a big difference between the HD of five years ago and the HD of today. There's lots of different levels. And that's something I'm not gonna go into great detail with. I'm just going to show you some examples on how clear the cameras are and then you guys can make the determination of if that's going to be something you're interested in. Now, as far as the software, all of that's included. We provide training and the support after the fact from our technicians. You can call us and that is no charge through our service policy. As the board members make change or responsibilities change, we'll be there for you to be able to provide you that service as needed. So, the recorder, that's going to be located here in the Borough Office Building and that's going to give you approximately 30 days worth of recording time. You'll have a flat screen display and you're going to have all the connections and power supplies, everything to have this a complete system. Another nice thing of our system would be the remote connectivity. Being able to see the cameras when you're not here on site is a big part of a camera system and being able to do it at ease, not just, it takes you five minutes to even pull one camera. We want you to be able to go over there, get to that camera, provide the footage that you need. If it needs to go to the police department, providing a link to them so that we can make it work. And you don't wanna have a system that, at the end of the day, when you go to pull the video, it's useless. If you're gonna go with a system that's only the lower level of high definition, it's not gonna give you the clarity that'd serve a purpose, then that's something that you wanna really think hard about. But, the ease of accessibility remotely is very universal through cell phones, iPads, computers, Macintosh. All those formats are gonna be supported. All the cameras that I have in the park are 4K resolution. That's eight megapixel. When we talk about the lower end of high definition, we're at 1080p, which is two megapixel. So, two million pixels versus eight million pixels. So, that high-definition television that's 1080p, we're gonna have four times the clarity on our cameras, recording for 30 days so you can go back and retrieve that evidence whenever that situation would come up. I have some different locations that I highlighted here. The parking lot, the playground, the tennis courts, the basketball court, and a view of the open space and towards the pavilion. This is not a system that's going to get every inch of the park. It wasn't intended to be getting every inch of the park. It was intended to get the hot topic items, the investments that you've made in that playground recently. The investment that you have in making sure that all of that equipment stays fresh and not vandalized so that children can use it. Same thing with the tennis courts, basketball courts, and pavilion and all of that. When we look at the 4K cameras and we look at identifying, that's a big thing that everyone wants to know. How can we identify someone? There's two types of cameras that we use on a regular basis. One is an overview camera like I have here, five listed. And the other one is a license plate camera, which I do not have on here and the reason why is there's not a great place to put one where I feel comfortable pitching it and saying, "Hey, this is gonna be the right solution for you." We need to have a location for a license plate camera that will, vehicles are being kinda cattle-shooted through and that's the end of the parking lot. And right now, we don't really quite have anything down there to be able to get a camera down there yet. But from what I understand, in the future, you may be repaving that lot. When you do that, you're probably gonna wanna put some light poles in at that point. I would recommend having a camera, some wiring and infrastructure there to be able to mount a license plate camera and you'll capture every license plate that runs through there. I'm also gonna go a little bit more into resolution here in one moment. The way that we're getting the camera signal from this building to the park and the other areas that I've noted where cameras are located would be through the wireless point-to-points. Those wireless point-to-points are very stable. We use them on an everyday basis. I would say in the past five years, about 60% of our work is apartment complexes. You have multiple buildings throughout a whole community but we've gotta link them all back to one location. These wireless point-to-points, we've got it down to a science. So, as far as wireless goes and cameras, a lot of times people say, "Wow, it hasn't been perfected." This, I guarantee, and I can give hundreds of examples of locations that we have this system and it works perfectly. The, some other auxiliary parts and pieces that we need to make everything happen, but the important part is the clarity. Here's a shot, a daytime shot of a parking lot and then if we take a look at the nighttime shot. And obviously, there's a lot of light here with light posts. I'm not trying to say this is a pitch dark shot. I'll show you a pitch dark shot here in a moment. But this gives you how, even in low light condition, the camera does a very good job. So, that's something that we wanna make sure that you're not just getting full daylight gray shots. You're getting, even in night times, you're gonna have some pretty decent shots. I wanna go over briefly again the locations of the cameras and how we're going to make this happen and how it can extend into the future and provide additional coverage if you decide that there's areas that you wanna cover in further detail. So, from the building that we're in right now, we're gonna jump wirelessly, that's that yellow line, to the pump house that's over there in the park, the top part of the park. That building will have three cameras on it. One camera is going to be looking towards the basketball court and you can see the dotted lines. That gives you a really good idea of how, what the field of vision is going to be for that camera. It's pretty wide field of vision. It's a little more than 90 degrees. So, you'll get a really good shot of even the, you know, any equipment, any issues that you may have over here. You'll get a pretty good sense of what's happening and timing on that along with the basketball court, which is the main focus of that camera. The next camera is going to be for the tennis courts and a little bit of the open field area. And then the third camera is off to the right side there, looking towards the pavilion, getting a second shot, an additional shot of the open field area down towards the pavilion area. This is, this camera is not going to get facial recognition of anyone at the pavilion. That's not what this is for. What we're looking at is, because it's an expandable system, it's something that we can grow with. If or when you decide you want to start putting cameras down there, we do another wireless jump, the yellow line that jumps over to the pavilion and we put cameras in that area. Typically, what happens is, is you're going to have a group of people that are up to no good. They're generally not gonna go right to the property, cause a problem and walk right out. They're normally gonna mosey around a couple different places. They'll pass by a camera or two, we'll get a really good shot of them. Then they'll walk over and flip a few tables over at the pavilion. We've already got their mugshot. We already have an identification of who they are and what they're wearing, the time, how many of them, what direction they came from. So, that, putting all those puzzle pieces together from one camera to the next is really important. Or it goes in reverse. They start at the pavilion and then they get scared off and they run down, past the playground, past this one camera, at the tennis courts, and to the parking lot. And we've got them on the playground camera and the camera that is down towards the parking lot. Now, this camera for the parking lot is intended to be an overview camera to see what type of traffic you have in the evening, what, what type of model and color vehicle for description. The license plate camera, my intentions are, we'd have one. We'd have a light pole in this general area. We'd have one camera that looks out and I'd like to try to capture both of these entrance exits at the same time. It may take two cameras, but generally speaking, the exit's what we wanna worry about in Pennsylvania because we're gonna have the rear license plate. That doesn't mean someone's from Maryland wouldn't come up, but we generally speaking would wanna always make sure we have a clear shot of the exit. And that would be best done, get wiring over there when we have a, wiring in place for that if you repave the parking lot. So, again, we have an overview of the parking lot. Anyone that leaves their vehicle to go to the playground or any of the courts, they're gonna walk right past this, this camera that's at the top of the screen here. We did a mugshot of them. You know, that's gonna be a clear shot. The bulk of the traffic probably comes from that direction and that's why I feel that's a really critical spot to have. They walk up through where the turnaround is, they go to the playground. If they're older teenagers causing problems at the playground, we've got a camera that's within 50 feet, 70 feet of the entire playground. You're gonna get a really clear description of what are they doing and who are they. Well, we were way closer to the Borough Building. We talked about those first three cameras and the overviews of the tennis court. Who's on there? How many people are there? Which direction did they come from? If they pass by this building, you're certainly going to see them. So, that goes over the layout of the camera system. I'm gonna show you a license plate camera here in just one moment, but I don't wanna disconnect my laptop just yet to show you that. I wanna talk about a segment of the purchase that is extremely important and that is our service policy. We offer a service policy with every system that we install, regardless of the type of system it is. And what it includes is 100% parts and labor, regardless of how long you've had the system. Be two years, five years, 10 years. If a camera dies, it's our responsibility to replace it if you don't get a bill. If you need some more tech support, you call us. We either give you the remote support or we have a technician show up on-site and provide you a training session at no cost. When you have a camera system that's protecting your investments in your park, you wanna be sure that you have that, have general maintenance on that at least once every year. We're providing that at no cost through the service policy. When you look at the overall cost, the monthly cost, you're probably going to have half of that money that you put towards that, at least half of it, probably would be what it would cost us to have a few technicians out here adjusting these cameras, cleaning, refocusing, making sure everything's recording properly. And you're gonna wanna have that done once a year anyway. So, the balance of the money that you would've spent that year would be for all the other items that are on this particular page that's called warranty service and support. That's all included, the remote connect and remote health monitoring. If a camera would go down and lose the video feed, we get a notification. We call you to let you know we need to have a technician come out to service that camera. If, if we can't fix it remotely. Sometimes we get that message. We can fix it remotely and it's done. It's not something where we wait for you to call us when there's a camera down. Many, many times, I would say 80% of the time, we're gonna be catching that ahead of time. So, that service policy is extremely important for those uses. The other huge advantage is that you can call us. We have technicians on call 24/7. If you have an event in the park where you need to get that footage to the police immediately, even though we've provided you training, you can let us know. We'll pull that video, send you the link, even email it to the police department if you'd like us to do that. So, the video retrieval at any point in time, you can call us and we can take care of that for you. So, we're looking at service after the sale. Not just, okay, we wanna sell you a camera system, you're never gonna see us again and don't, you know, don't call us 'cause it, you know, we want it to be that it's a long-term relationship. That's how we treat all of our clients. We wanna make sure that it's an ongoing service benefit for you to have this feature of our service policy. So, that goes over the entire system. I do wanna show you a license plate camera real quick so you can understand what I would recommend in that parking lot in the future. We could even possibly put one there now, but we have to guarantee that they're gonna go around that turn and we're gonna catch them. And that, that'll probably be every time to the time we need it to happen. I mean, it's just the way it goes. So, I have no problem putting one in there, but I just don't feel it's gonna be a catch-all solution. I wanna make sure if we're gonna do something, we do it right. The equipment installation, you're looking at 18.5 and then the monthly service policy is $80 a month. Again, it's about $960, but you're probably gonna be looking at about $450-ish for that annual service policy anyway. So, you spend another $450, $500 and you have all the other benefits, pulling video, 24-hour support, all of that is included. 100% parts and labor on that. So, that's the camera system. We'll make a quick switch here and go over to my iPad. Did that look up on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so, what I'll do is I'll hop over to this shot here. And just to kinda give you an idea of what we're looking at here, when we are looking at license plates in the evening, we don't want the headlights or taillights to wash out the main important spot, which is the license plate. So, it's gonna be very dark because we are only interested in this particular camera getting a license plate. So, I'll let you see this. I'm also gonna hold my iPad up so the audience can, oh, I'm sorry, it says airplane. That's the first time that happened. So, I'll go ahead and let it play. You'll see a few vehicles in the distance and then this one coming up. I'm expecting, because it's in Maryland, that we would've gotten the front license plate. But I noticed something blip up on the dashboard and when that happened, I paused it and zoomed in and it's actually a license plate on the dashboard. So, I'm here getting prepared for a meeting the next day with Baltimore City Police Department, making sure I'm not wasting their time. And I was happy because I thought at first that I had caught a vehicle that didn't have a front license plate, exactly what I didn't wanna have happen, but it ended up being like one of the best videos I could use to show you the license plate camera because you see it on the dashboard and you have that show up and you have a very clear shot. When I showed that to the police department, I said, "I think I'm missing a number." They were like, "We can tell you who that is. Just give us five minutes." I mean, it honestly was a great testament to how clear our cameras are and that's the type of system that you need to have to identify everyone, not only from the park but anywhere else in the community that we can see a line of sight to, we can put one of these cameras in. The other benefit of these cameras is that it actually creates a database of every vehicle that goes through it. Every single number goes into a spreadsheet. The date, time, which direction it's going. So, if you need to know how many times has this vehicle in the area in the past 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, you're gonna be able to pull that report. If you need to know even a notification, next time this person comes into town, we wanna be aware of it. You get a notification on your phone so you can put a list in there of all these different numbers. So, those are all, you know, things that you can do with this license plate camera that we can certainly integrate in to the package once we have a clear shot. I don't wanna install it if it's not gonna serve a purpose and right now, the location just can't get a wire there right now. It just isn't possible. So, I don't want you to spend your money on it if it's not gonna be something that's useful for you. So, that shows you that. I, I have this right here and this is a little bit off-topic, but... So, last Saturday or Sunday, I was sitting in my living room and I heard this really loud noise. And I couldn't figure out what it was 'cause it kept getting louder and louder. I'm at the end of a cul-de-sac so I'm thinking, whatever is coming is not gonna be able to turn. And, I mean, I couldn't even believe what, what happened. There's a four-wheeler. Look at this guy. Man, he's like 12, 10 or 12 years old. And this guy, I mean, just at the end of that, it's like, I mean, I hate to laugh, but when you look at this, look at how he hits this thing and he's ramming over the sidewalk. Now, my, my house is right there, okay? So, then I go and I take a look at this side thing. Keep an eye, ooh. I mean, I couldn't, that's about the time that I looked up to see what's going on. I'm looking at my camera, saying, "When is that noise?" And I see this kid rolling across the... So, he comes and he hits Saturday and he was okay. I mean, I can't believe it. But he got up, his dad came running down. He said, "We were fixing, fixing it and I put a new carbureator in. The throttle got stuck and the brake wasn't working." And they, all they were trying to do is just to push start to get it started, just to get it running. And that kid just took off and it's downhill. So lucky, so lucky.
Can you get us zoom in and see who he is?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a kid up the street from me.
The face, the face.
For us, right.
Yeah, so if we go in here...
I'm sure the face would come in, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
Actually, I need to, it doesn't show me on my screen. But yeah, I mean, you can zoom in and, you know, see what's going on. I also have a system up on my, yeah, play here. Laying back down. But yeah, zooming in, we have a pretty large area that we're covering. We zoom into that area and still retain that clarity.
Like, like when you're riding. Can you, can you come in on that? I mean, before you crash.
Yeah.
Try to read his lips?
Yeah. Let me see if I can pause this real quick.
I wish you guys could see this, I'm sorry.
But you really don't get the clear of your face. That's what concerns you.
When we look at, for instance, this site here, I actually pulled this up and I got to talking about all the different camera locations. We have one site here, I'll show you real quick and then we'll move on to the other items I wanted to go over. Okay, so I'm gonna double-click this. It always depends on the speed of the internet. This is also bringing it up. There we go. So, because we're looking at the, we zoom in on this. Look at... Zooming around, we can see, you know, one. I, the reason why it's blurry right there and I can get you some still shots of the same exact camera is that I didn't wanna, saw how long it took for me to come up.
Yeah.
It's a blur because of that. If I was hooked to a faster internet connection...
But it really isn't clear, you know. If you tell somebody, trying to find somebody, you take them to court, they wouldn't hold it. You gotta see more of the face.
Well, that's something that...
There's nothing that can be done about that.
These cameras are 4K clarity. There's honestly, if you go any higher in clarity, the price gets to the point where it doesn't even make sense to price it out because it's just, it doesn't. You know, they haven't been around that long. But I will grab you a couple snapshots of this camera, the same exact camera, and email them to you. One of the things I didn't have enough time here today to get all together is the proposals that I emailed out, not only of this system, but of some of the other things I'll be talking about and I'll make sure that you have those in your inbox by the end of the day tomorrow. And some other examples of some different cameras. When we take a look at the security proposal. So, before we hop into the security and I'll get you some still shots and some facial recognition shots so that you can see that. I apologize, I don't have one of that camera right now. So, are there any other questions with the system as far as where, how it's gonna be installed, the location of the camera, the expandability of it? The location of the camera, the expandability of it?
What are the other people that experienced that you told us? I mean, you can talk about the Baltimore police. I mean, are they... Are they... Is it working for them to identify people and identify license plates?
We didn't sell directly to the Baltimore City Police Department. What we did is the apartment complexes I talked about before, we have a lot that are in different areas and different districts of the police department. And what we do is if it's okay with the owner, which 90% of the time it is, we say, "Is it okay that we let the police know that we have this system here? Give them a remote connection into it where they have a screen and they can see those particular cameras that are entrusted to them." And they love them. They have come in very useful. And we've got some pretty bad areas of DC, Baltimore, and other areas, Philadelphia, New Jersey areas where, you know, there's some crazy crime that's going on. Shootings and car fires and muggings and things like that. And it's come into use very... Probably, I would say, 85% of the time. It's never 100%, nothing's 100%.
But they've been able to use the clarity in making arrests?
Absolutely.
Because we have carburnings right here, right on the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, you're going to see... It's not just getting the description of who they are. It's also finding out who are they with? What direction did they come from? Did they show up in a vehicle? Did they ride a bike? What was the logo on their shirt? There's lots of different things that you can put together. And when the police do their job and they go through the interrogation, you know, those are all techniques that they use bits and pieces of the video to be able to let them know that they have them on camera. And, you know, just, you know, it's going to be better off for them to go with that.
One thing I think everybody here needs to know is our local police department is using their system. Our wastewater treatment plant is using their system. So we've had no complaints so far with the wastewater treatment plant. I was over, I talked to chief about it. He said they are completely satisfied. And they think that this would be something that would ultimately help them a lot with incidences in the park where they can't be here because they're covering four different municipalities. And this is something that came up on Facebook today. Well, why can't the police just cover it? Well, they've got four... They've got Stewartstown, they've got Glen Rock, they've got Shrewsbury, they've got five, Railroad and New Freedom. And we've got two officers on. They can't be at the park 24/7. And believe me, I can see the park 24 hours a day. I know what goes on down there. And at 2:00 in the morning, there's nothing good going on down at that park. I've seen drug deals go down in the parking lot. I've seen assaults on the parking lot where you've got four kids beating up on another kid. And the police can't do anything about it. The kid's afraid. The parents want to push, press charges, but the kid won't identify him. This would identify him. But the police chief here is very well pleased and he would encourage us.
We have, just to kind of expand on what he was saying, the York Area Regional Police Department, we have cameras at their police department as well as the park, the York Township Park there at the end of the parking lot. We also have Newville Police Department, a couple other police departments, as well as obviously the Southern Regional.
My question is, how secure are these cameras? You know, and I was... Are they somebody up to no good? You know, when you go around and you check out, "Oh, there's a camera, I'm going to avoid this camera and that camera." You know, how secure is the system?
They're very secure. One reason is because we always try to mount the camera high enough that it's difficult to get to. And even if you try to get to it, if you're three inches or two feet away from the camera and you're banging with a sledgehammer on it, we get a perfect mugshot if you descend the middle too. I mean, that's what it boils down to.
It's going to be high enough so that they can...
They'd have to have a ladder to get to hit it. Or reach up with a bat. I mean, but at that point, they're so close to the camera, it's extremely difficult for you not to know who that is. Another item of, you know, and I debated on, in my mind of even bringing this up, but I do... My wife and I actually were walking through Calstar Park about 20 minutes before the incident that happened up there last week. Hand, walking our dog, and then we came down. And they don't have any cameras at all. And honestly, having something there would have given them something better than nothing. And if the police are monitoring the park just from time to time and they see that there's a group of kids and they're probably not up to too good, they can go and address it maybe before the vandalism happens. Let's not wait till it happens and go to the cameras and say, "Who was that?" Let's say, okay, well, if there's a group of kids that are... They're not supposed to be in the park after dark, you know, unless there's an event going on. So those are all things that we can look at to try to, you know, use these cameras as a way to prevent things from happening or see what are they up to. Maybe they're not doing anything wrong, they're walking their dog. You know, so those are all things to kind of keep in mind.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the camera system?
Yeah, just one question. What's the maximum effective range at nighttime? Because that's when most things will happen.
That's a great question. Yeah, we have night vision on every single one of our cameras. And the other thing that we have with our cameras is that it has technology that's called starlight vision. And that, I'd like to explain that especially around the Fourth of July. When you look down, when it's starting to get dark, you can still see the grass is green. By the time that they're setting the fireworks off, if you look down, the grass is black. You can't see that it's green anymore. That's exactly how the cameras work. When you are looking at the camera system and you're looking at a low light condition, you're going to see a lot of that color. It's not going to be like the old days where it just flips to black and white as soon as the sun goes down. And the perfect example of that is just hopping back here and showing... There's daytime, you know, full daylight. And there's, with a little bit of light, you can see, you know, a red vehicle. And that's at least 80 yards away, if not more than 100. I mean, I'd say it's at least 80 yards away. And we're able to see that vehicle in there. Now, when we come to total pitch dark conditions, that's going to be more in line with where we're at right here. Just going to set this down here for one moment. So we've got daytime versus nighttime. That's very... There's very little light. And the one thing that I want to show you is that when we look at a daytime shot or an interior shot, because this is a good example, full daylight during the day, pitch dark in that room. So now, reflect back to that outside shot. That wasn't just the glow of a light. It's actually the glow of the infrared light that we're seeing. So we have, again, full daytime shot, full light. And then we have a pitch dark room, okay? And so our cameras, now, to what you said, to what distance does this happen? You're typically looking at about 200 feet. You know, you're not going to get much further than... It's like a flashlight. Up close, it's going to be extremely bright. When you get, you know, 100 feet away, it's going to be about half that. 200, it's pretty much nothing at that point. But any residual light is going to give you kind of what we have here.
You had another question in the back?
Sure, yes.
So it sounds like there are going to be a lot of cameras around the park area. So I have two questions. A, are all those cameras really necessary, concentrating strictly around the park area? And then B, I'm assuming that us taxpayers will end up having to pay for these cameras? So I'm just wondering, yeah, the cost of that?
Right.
Cost of that? And then do we need so many cameras, like all the different car fires? Like, are they... I don't know if some of those kids have been caught yet? Or are they congregating in the park? It just seems like so many cameras in the park area.
Well, I would say that you've got a point. Probably, and obviously, there's no way for me to know this for sure, but they may end up being at the park half the time. And when they're in the park, they're probably up to no good as well. So if we know that they're down there and we catch them for vandalizing the playground, I mean, if you spent the money that you spent on that playground, if you would have vandalized, the repairs to it probably would be half the cost of this camera system. And this camera system isn't the end-all, be-all. Basically, it's a starting point to focus on the areas that a lot of the public goes to and where a lot of money has been spent to, you know, enhance the park facilities. We have other solutions that we can provide. For instance, like pod cameras that can be located in a certain area. All we need to have is an electric outlet. And we can have a couple cameras in some strategic locations. And if there was a fire on a street that's nowhere visible from here, we would be able to see that and pull that video footage. And we can kind of take and move that around as needed. That's not part of what we talked about today, but those are the types of solutions that we can certainly provide. This is just the first step.
Because we're not York and we're not Baltimore City. I know there are crimes here, but it's nothing like these big cities that would warrant all these cameras around, you know, this one concentrated area.
Uh huh, yeah, it's five cameras. So the five cameras are spread out across the park so you see a good shot. I would say if we did a pod system on a street that's off to the side where you're noticing it's the heart of where you're having some car fires, I would say you'd have maybe four cameras off of that looking in various different directions. So we had every opportunity from that vantage point to grab that. The difference between that is the fact that we don't have to do any trenching or wiring, wireless point-to-points. All that needs to be done just to get off the ground. But we can certainly help you in those areas from that point.
And the current design of what we have down there now is where we have had problems in the past and on an ongoing basis. And where we anticipate problems to be, which is out in the middle of the field, kind of toward the bandstand. Now, right now, we can't really get a facial ID. But like he said, usually if there's kids down there, and I called them. Luckily, I had my camera with me, took pictures from my dad and the police offered my iPhone, were able to ID these kids that were busting up the picnic tables and were able to make an arrest. This is... During the day, I'm sure we're going to get a little bit better picture than at night. But this anticipates what our major need would be down there, especially safety and the security and welfare of people in the park during the day. I mean, we've had assaults happen at the park. The basketball court, the tennis courts. The big thing is kids with bikes, kids with skateboards. We can actually see who it is, give a picture to the police. They can go out and cite them because we have an ordinance that they're not allowed to ride skateboards. We've already resurfaced that tennis court. And you wouldn't believe the kids jumping on the... You know, how they jump and spin the skateboards and then they dig into the surface. And like I said, the police can't be there all the time. I'm 69 years old. I'm not going down that park against five kids anymore. I'm not going to do it. My bones break too easy. You never know what you're going to get into. And a police officer may be in Glen Rock, can't respond right away. But by golly, if we can zoom in on that kid's face, they're going to find him. Because somebody else is going to know. If you're familiar with Crime Stoppers, they show pictures all the time of people on Crime Stoppers, which they belong to. And kids will let you know. We've got SROs over at the school. "Hey, that was Johnny, I recognize him." They'll go to the SRO and tell them who it was. I don't think we're overdoing, to be honest with you. As a matter of fact, we probably are under what we would like to have because of not having one directly down at the bandstand and not having currently a license plate reader. But we're building on a basic system. I do think, I know you're saying, "Well, five cameras." But those five cameras are going to give us exactly what we need to be able to keep our community safe. We've got a million dollars in that park.
And the insurance probably has risen recently as well.
Well, that's another thing that was brought up. I don't know if you had a chance to check.
They're waiting on a response back.
A lot of times, insurance companies will drop your premiums if they know that you may be able to pick up a kid. He makes restitution instead of the insurance company having to pay for it.
Or just the sheer deterrence of it.
Right, the sheer deterrence. All it takes is a couple of kids to say, "Hey, don't go down to the park and screw around because they got cameras, they're going to catch you." That in itself is, to me, is worth the price.
Well, the fact that the insurance company is going to reduce your rates for any reason is a deliency of any sort. Because they realize that it releases a little bit of liability from them because they can see what happens and hopefully hold someone accountable for it. But maybe even just deter it from the beginning.
It's just some kind of signs so when they walk in, they see right away you're on camera?
Uh huh, we can provide all those signs. We have them already made up. We have thousands of them. We put them anywhere you want.
But they'll know they're under surveillance.
Say 24-hour video surveillance provided by CIA Alarm.
Right, in the effort to keep us on track with time, I do want to get some of the council's discussion, a good one with this. I do have, there's a couple of comments that Andy and I had talked about the other day. But what this is going to come down to is, what I would like to see is possibly a committee of individuals with both the council and the rec council and preferably somebody from the community, not limiting it to a certain number, maybe three, five, whatever. But take maybe the better part of three months and sit on this and talk about it. And some of the issues that need to be resolved is, what crimes are we trying to prevent? The cost and benefit of that? Who will monitor it? Review only after the incident? No active monitoring by person, meaning somebody here at the burrow? Civilians and elected officials should not have access to this. It should be reviewed by the police. Again, these are just questions. What are we going to catch on here? Is it misdemeanors? Is it something else? And is it worth the cost of prosecution for a $100 fine? As mentioned before, there was current vandalism in the park that totaled about $3,000 over the last 10 years. The cost of the cameras themselves are, I think, $28,500. Or also, I'm sorry, $18,000. I apologize. If the camera is not actively digitally zoomed by a person blowing it up, basically, that comes down to the video quality or the quality of the picture. About the $80 a month, is there other options that are available? I'd like there to be some police input and success that they've had in other municipalities, other burrows or townships. If they've ever... About the placement of the cameras, if they wish they would have put them somewhere else instead of where they currently have them. Again, community input, and then we can use a savvy citizen to get the word out for this. The cost justification, again, over three years, over 10 years, there's only $3,000.
Brian, may I say something just for the rec council?
Sure.
Okay, so I just... I was in a discussion right before I was hitting, putting my hand up. So I just wanted to make sure that this council is aware that the rec board unanimously recommends accepting this proposal. There is things to consider other than just... Mine's going blank, then graffiti. There are crimes. There's a post on Facebook discussion going on right now and apparently used condoms were found in the park over the carnival time period where visitors coming to our town brought their children to our playground when we've spent blood, treasure, all kinds of sweat and tears to build and provide. And they come and find used condoms on the slide. And that's the impression they're left with the freaking... And they're probably never going to come back to this town. Granted, the cameras may not prevent it, but it will help us capture these people so that it doesn't continue to happen. Having the signs will help prevent... Maybe some people will read the signs, some people probably won't read the signs. But it gives an avenue to help protect our community in more ways than just graffiti. But I did want to have on the record that the rec board unanimously recommends this proposal.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
The condoms are a true story, by the way. I've also heard that.
Heard or seen?
I know someone who saw one.
I just, I want to... There's so many keyboard cowboys out there that put so many things out there that, "I heard it from so-and-so, it was really getting a third-hand information." And it's like playing telephone at work.
And I've talked to people also that have left and taken their kids home because of older kids being there and the language. And I think this is sound, am I correct?
You have audio available to you. It's just a matter of checkbox.
So we've had people, you know, the F-bomb gets dropped, especially over at the basketball court. And that's a big thing. And we've had people that take their kids home because of that. And just because of the other kids horsing around, you know, the bigger kids on the smaller kids' play equipment. And the harassment, you know? The kids are harassed. The adults are harassed by the younger kids. I've talked to them personally.
I've seen a lot of people that aren't using the equipment, older kids not using the equipment properly. They then get hurt that they weren't using the equipment properly.
And want to sue the borough.
And they want to sue the borough. Now, if we have a document and a video that we've dealt with that on more than one occasion, that person, it's hard for them to say, "Oh, I didn't know. So give me some light." Because it's your fault, not mine.
In my mind, if we prevent one crime, one rape, one assault, one homicide, it's worth every penny.
As we, you said, waiting three months, that would be like the end of the summer. The summer is usually when a lot of crime occurs. Then we have a lot of growth. Businesses are moving into new freedom, the growth will continue, and I think we need this system. We need this system very bad. People have contacted me that they were in favor of it, and I really don't think we should drag our feet on this system. So I mean, I don't know what the public, but I really, I feel very strong about this because we have so much growth coming. So I would like to make a motion that we go with the system, that we adopt this system.
This is, this is, I understand what you're saying, this is a large expense that that an expense this size should not just be made willy-nilly.
We just spent, we just agreed to spend fifty thousand dollars to fix up a room for our employees, fifty thousand dollars for a bunk, a kitchen and sinks and bathrooms, fifty thousand, you know, which they deserve, they deserve. This is a fraction of that.
They're also spending twelve and sixteen hour workdays.
But this is with the safety of the safety of the community.
I'm not disagreeing with with anything, I'm saying that this is a lot of money to just go off and spend.
But the total cost, what is what is what do you have?
Without the input of the community.
Don't want Facebook, you've gotten all the input today.
Even the way, even the way we're having a second right now, but I would, I would propose that we don't take any action until the council president is back for the next meeting because he has some strong feelings about this and he ought to be here to express his opinion, and he's not here to do that, and I think it's inappropriate to do that. So that would be my suggestion, even though we don't have a second right now.
Well, you can either choose to give a second.
I'll go.
Make a motion.
Wait, then first and second.
Why can't we have a roll call?
Wait, 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 just hold on a second now.
Your motion is that it needs to be reiterated, your motion is, the additional discussion, so just everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, because I I think the motion is unclear as to what exactly, because I think to make a motion, and I think your motion is to accept the proposal from, I forgot the name, I'm sorry.
IGS.
That is my, that is my motion.
Wait, in the amount of?
Eighteen-five, but then there's also the option.
Plus an additional eighty dollars per month, certain security policy or whatever. And I guess, is there a second to that motion?
Dave's second.
We do have a motion, we have a second and any additional discussion?
Well, I'll just add something, the reason I'm second in it is because I'm, I've got grandchildren and they they tell me that the drugs are are done, the deals are done with the kids down there. My grandson was fifteen, has been approached to get drugs, you know, it's, and there's some, and I see the same group of people doing stuff. I mean, if we could, if we could identify some of these people, we'd get done, we'd be done with it. You know, they wouldn't be doing this stuff, and I see it from my deck every week, every week.
Yeah, it's big. I would across the street, but I mean, we haven't been able to get photographs of people or anything like this. I even like having these cameras, again, Europe for twenty years ago, they've had them, you know, for security in the streets in the old towns, and they work very well, they're very clear, because you have to identify, you have to, you have to nip it in the butt, and and we're growing, and I think with growth and everything, we'll have, you know, it's a necessity, I really do think it's a necessity.
I think the license plate thing gonna make a big, big difference, too.
Yeah.
Right now, that is not currently on on the table as part of the vote.
Going forward.
Yes.
Because I walk my dog all the time at night in that vicinity and I see cars and there's there's stuff going on, there's, if you capture that license is going out, I mean, you'd have something, something to start with, you know?
Again, I wanna reiterate that I believe that we should have more community involvement, not just the the small fraction of individuals that are here. We also don't have the council president to Dennis's point.
You have a quorum. You have a quorum, you should go forward.
Yes.
There's been a motion and a second.
Tell it on to you. And we can take a roll call.
I was gonna say, why have a meeting if you're not gonna do anything because the president's not here?
Yeah. I need you to show a answer.
You know, we're talking about waiting one month for the council president to be here.
You have a quorum.
All right, stop, stop, we're gonna get this back on track. Is there any additional comments?
I would just say, yeah, Jack Echener, I would just say that if you're gonna have surveillance here in Penn March Goodfell, then you're gonna have to have surveillance down at Freedom Green and at museums because if we're not gonna be doing the drug deals out there, then we're gonna be doing it across Main Street, so.
Again, these are, these are all questions that I'd like the the community to have some input. It's a slippery slope, I think there's a lot of people out there who don't wanna feel like they are being watched by big brother, so to speak. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to this, I'm saying that I think we should have more community input.
Is the?
Name and address.
Michael Warden, and I'm on Ten Meadow, is the eighteen-five all or nothing, can you go?
Again, that's a question that I would, I would love this this group to look at.
Start with half the system at two key points and then maybe we grow into something later. The basketball, the basketball courts are, you know, obviously one of the epicenters in the grandstand area, yeah, but.
And the tennis courts and the play areas, there are three.
Come, relax. So the proposal as it sits, just so we're all on the same page, is for the current proposed, current proposal at eighteen-five plus the eighty dollar a month service contract. Yes?
How do you propose to get the community?
Name, name and and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lita Thompson, New Freedom. How do you propose to get the community to, are you gonna put it up for a vote, a public vote?
No, it would not be a public vote, we would get the word out through the savvy citizen, word of mouth, Facebook, any other ways that we can.
Right, you got a lot of smart answers.
I don't think that's gonna work, sorry. I don't think.
You can put a poll on Facebook so that people.
Well, there's, there's so many people who are not on Facebook.
We did that before, we had forty-three responses.
Okay, all right, is there any additional comments?
How about the?
Name and address, please.
Wayne Works Parker, Thirty-Seventh Street. How about the tenant flexible ass over top the license plates, if you go that route, would that camera pick up through the?
That's not, that's not part of this firm's proposal.
We go forward.
That would be a question for them, not, not now. But that's not part of the proposal that's right now.
Cheryl Thompson, New Freedom, my question is, is all the construction done in the park? That's all I wanna know. Are we finished with it? Is that what we have there is what is done? Are we finished?
With the current phase, there's no other additional.
You're not putting professional soccer fields in or a walkway or we're done, right? So the cameras will be the end to?
So there, there is an additional playground in Zeebo, is that correct?
Pavilion, yes.
Pavilion, there is an additional playground in Pavilion that is scheduled to be installed. I do not know the date.
Okay.
All right. Any additional comment? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. We've had our discussion. Do a roll, a roll call move?
Yeah, roll call.
All right, I'm just gonna go down through, read your names, who you're gonna vote in favor or not, Ryan Ross.
I vote against.
No.
Nay.
Uh, Anshina?
Nay.
Dennis Sarpin?
Nay, and I think, of course, we should have the recommendation that we have, did you look at this, it's not gonna, you know, we haven't had it till now, so it'll take some time to make a decision.
Okay, Brunel Willison?
I'm for it.
Aye. Okay. Inka Andrews?
For it.
Dave Reiserstor?
For it.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm for it, aye.
Just, just so everybody understands, we have one absent, in the event of a tie, the mayor breaks the tie. Well, now everybody does.
So the, the motion carries?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, do we wanna go over the security for the building, the actions control?
I think we're.
Okay, very good.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from June fourteen meeting.
All right, we have, we have a motion.
Steve, can you do these individually or?
You can do them together.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from both meetings, June fourteen to thirty.
Okay, I thought you guys did approval from the Lions meeting, now, okay. All right, so they, again, we have a motion, we have a second for the approval of both meetings, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? My vote is aye. Okay. Everybody by the door. There we go. All right, next item on the agenda, approval of the treasurer's report, June twenty-twenty-one.
I just had a couple of questions, what's the GDU Energy line item?
Electric service.
Yeah, good, dear, okay. And what's the management chamber insurance?
Uh, that's for health insurance, for employees.
On you.
We have a motion that we approve the treasurer's report?
We have a motion? We have a second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there any noes or nays?
My vote is aye. It's the treasurer's reports. Administration report. When I talked to Andy, he said he didn't have anything because everything was covered at the last meeting. Mayor?
I really don't have anything, I, again, would like to thank the Lions, I know there's still some cleanup, whoops, I know there's still some cleanup to do down there, but they put in a lot of hard work and everything that they, that they raise, I don't know what the final tally was, but we had a good week, I think. A lot of hard work, I know I worked in the, they let me count money this year. So I was in the air conditioning while everybody else was out in the ninety degree heat. We appreciate all their efforts and that, that money all goes back to the community, so we look forward to your, to your, to your well-being and your future. I know it's been a tough year, you haven't been able to do an awful lot of fundraising and and I hope on behalf of council and New Freedom that it, it turns out to be a very fruitful event for you and we look forward to many more. I really have nothing else other than, you know, hopefully next year, I've suggested to chief that we do have two police officers that are down there every year, I've asked him to maybe increase that to three because we had some incidents down there, hopefully what we did tonight will decrease that for next year. But again, fireworks, I asked him to put four on because the problem that we had for the, for the Fourth of July, this was like a war zone, and you got two officers, one in Stewartstown, one in in Truesberry, and here we are, we've got people shooting Roman candles at each other across the street at, at Franklin Square. They think that, you know, that's all their property out there where the commercial buildings are gonna be, and they can set off fireworks, and we couldn't get anybody to be there. We apparently had a problem with nine-one-one, people in the area called nine-one-one, the operators were saying, well, don't you know fireworks are now legal in Pennsylvania? Well, not when you're shooting, they'll miss your neighbor's house, they're not, a hundred and fifty feet away. We've got one, two properties, I think, in the borough that qualify, and, you know, I couldn't even see up where you guys live up at Kohler Point for the smoke, you know, couldn't even see a house. So, you know, that's something we're gonna have to deal with next year, maybe we won't have to deal with it. I know there's, they're bringing up new legislation that reverses the fireworks law. I hope personally that that they do reverse it. I have nothing else other than I will defer to the police department report.
John Trout started the meeting recognizing the efforts of Officer Derek Smith, he had responded to a call in Glen Rock for a traumatic injury call, the victim had almost blown his hand off for the fireworks. So the officer applied a tourniquet, he got there before the medics, and he was able to help him until the medics arrived, so he gave him an appointment. The chief did not have the incident reports for the last reporting period or the the crime totals because the sergeant was on vacation and the meeting was held earlier than usual for July. He did go over some incidents that occurred in June, the department assisted the US Marshals and the Drug Task Force with a, some search warrant and an arrest warrant for a homicide suspect who was staying in an apartment in Stewartstown, they conducted a raid on the apartment, the suspect was in there and he was arrested, and they recovered guns and drugs from the apartment. In Truesberry, they had a theft in the professional center, the suspect was a female from Prince George's County, she came up, went into a doctor's office, walked around, grabbed a pocketbook, stole the purse, went into some stores locally, used her credit cards, they were able to identify her through surveillance video, they did arrest her in PG County and they obtained search warrants for her car and her house. He said the Truesberry carnival went well, no major incidents, the sheriff's office did assist the staffing there. Officer Gabriel Romolo has passed all of his background tests, so he is scheduled to start with the department on July twenty-sixth. He did mention the fireworks everywhere, they did issue a few citations to people, and next month's meeting will be back here in New Freedom.
I have one other thing to add for the police report. I think chief also did let us know that there are an awful lot of scams, phone scams going around, some people have been falling for them, some of them are unemployment scams where they're getting people's social security numbers and filing for unemployment. That person does get unemployed, goes to file and they say, well, you're already collecting unemployment, it's somebody else, they need, you need to make sure you keep, and nobody should be asking you for your social security number on the phone. The other thing is IRS, there are a lot of calls coming through that it's IRS and you need to issue a check, but the address is not to the IRS. Older folks in in town, sometimes they will fall for this, the same scam as your grandson's in jail, you need to send us a check to pay his bail. Please be very, very careful and diligent, you can always call the police to see if this is illegitimate, that we had an incident, too, in town here where we had pest control, we had two pest control companies, unfortunately, that asked for solicitation, what do you call it, permits, the same weekend, while the one had them and the other one, apparently we turned those over to the police department so they know it's legit, the one got theirs at ten minutes of five, ten minutes of four, and the police department was closing, so the police didn't realize that they had a permit. So the police didn't realize that they had a permit. Don't be afraid to ask anybody that's soliciting at your door if they have a permit. They should have a lanyard, they should have a permit number that's issued from this office. Please, you know, be careful. There are a lot of scrupulous people out here. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Ryan, a question for the mayor or Donna. If I go to the ASRPD website, I'm not seeing the police commission meeting minutes anymore. Is the commission suspended publishing their meeting minutes since 2021?
Not supposed to be. Now, we do have a new secretary since Nate, since Nate resigned, we have a new secretary and maybe it's just a matter of she's not aware that she shouldn't be posting them. I would be happy to bring that up to Commissioner Trout and make sure that that's done in the future.
Yeah, well, I think Nate resigned last year, so I...
Correct.
I think the person who's taking the meeting minutes knows they're supposed to be posted. But when I go to the website, I don't see anything past 2020 there.
I will make sure that that's done in the future and that they post the past, past minutes, previous minutes. Okay? Thank you.
I have a question. Is there a place, I'm on Facebook a lot and a lot of times you get...
What's the name and...
Oh, Addy in New Freedom, I'm on Main Street. So my question is, is there a place to go where you can actually see where there's businesses that are moving here? Which businesses are coming? Also, farmlands that have been sold that are going to be houses or apartments, whatever. Is there a place to go to see what's coming into town?
There's nothing that's posted or advertised other than real estate sales in the newspaper.
Okay, so there's, like, we can't, we don't know what's coming on Main Street as far as, like, any businesses. There's nowhere to go to see?
The new website is going to be on there? All right, so part, actually, I just learned this. This is, so part of the new website, there will be a section with new businesses. So we don't have a start date for the new website. Again, that'll be all handled in-house by Andrew himself. But that will have a section for that, so that's a good question. Thank you.
One other thing. So is Kirshner, is that part of New Freedom or is that...
That's Shrewsbury Township. Okay, yep.
Isn't that the dividing line between the borough?
I thought the dividing line was actually in the field. I believe it is entirely in Shrewsbury Township. Okay, managers report?
All right, just a few quick items since we did have the meeting about two weeks ago. Just a couple of quick items tonight. Internally, we have fully migrated to QuickBooks for employee payroll. So we'll be using that going forward. Over the next couple of weeks, we're going to slowly transition the remaining financials over to QuickBooks. And again, the goal there is just better reporting and better budget planning and having the ease of that information at the employees and council's hands. Regarding employees, at the last meeting, the manual and job descriptions were approved by council. So thank you. Those are in the process of being provided to the employees and everybody's being updated on that information. They're already aware of it, it's just the final copies have, are being issued. Also internally, we will be moving the phone system to a voice-over IP system. Again, just updated technology. Right now, the way the quote stands is we'll be saving about $400 a month between the different facilities. So it's pretty significant savings as well as updating and giving the employees new features. Just an update, you do have the update in your packet from Buchard Horn regarding some of the engineering things. Just a quick update on Franklin made a constitution, basically substantially complete at this point. We do have a walkthrough scheduled and we'll be finalizing the details there. We also worked on the call sharing agreement with Columbia Gas for reimbursement, basically, of costs. So we're working with the engineer to try to get those quantities sent over so we can finalize that payment. Public Works renovation, the schematic design and the budget estimate that was authorized as part of Phase 1 Services, that is anticipated to be received by mid-July, which we're basically into late July. So within the next two weeks, I anticipate that we'll have that schematic design and the budget estimate for review by council at the August meeting. The other outstanding item is the E&amp;A agreement and ordinance. We had anticipated it to be done in July. We got pushed back a little bit. So everybody now has seen the draft ordinance and been sent to the municipalities. So that will be, at this point, on the agenda for August. And we just wanted to make sure we had all the details and everybody on the same page before passing that. One of the things that you have in front of you tonight is Governor Wolf last week signed Senate Bill 554, which is now Act 65 of 2021. This does amend the Sunshine Act and basically puts new requirements on posting public meeting agendas. Nothing too out of the ordinary from what we're already doing, which is posting the agenda on the website at least 24 hours before, making copies of the agenda available at the meeting. One new item is actually to physically post the agenda, basically, on the doors to the building or to wherever you're having the meeting, at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. So that's something new. The other thing that it really locks down is when that agenda is prepared and available for public inspection, you're pretty much held to those action items that are listed on the agenda at that time. There is a way, obviously, to still bring things up.
I'm about to.
There's still a way for, you know, this body to address things that have come up in the last 24 hours. And basically, what it comes down to is if there's an action item, you'll need to make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Wash your hands then.
But basically...
Wipe it over there.
If you wish to add an agenda to, or add an item to the agenda, you'll have to vote on that. And then whatever is amended has to also be posted on the building 24 hours or one business day after the meeting. The minutes will also need to reflect those changes, so...
And the reason for the addition to the agenda?
Correct, yeah.
Which is sort of weird.
It is a little interesting. At this point, those changes go into effect on August 29th. So basically, for September's meeting and moving forward unless something is appealed. But not, not a huge work requirement, but there are additional regulations and stipulations that we need to be aware of moving forward. So you do have a quick reference to that tonight. The last item is, we did do a savvy citizen post or notification today regarding the two vacancies on the zoning hearing board for alternate members. Those still stand. One of the other boards that is still in need of members is the Property Maintenance Appeals Board. If you recall, the Property Maintenance Ordinance required that that board be established. So we'll be looking for three members and two alternates. And again, that's the same thing. If anybody is interested from the public, you should submit a letter of interest along with a statement of financial interest. And so we have that and we'll get through the appointment then when we can have a quorum and have a full body. Other than that, I don't have anything else unless anybody has any questions.
Andrew, on the, the review for the restorations of the state highways, you know, for where the public works, where it was done, is not going to be involvement answer? Are they going to be participants? Are we going to sign off on them?
Yeah, I believe PennDOT has already been through and looked at some of the things. Donnie, do you know if they've been invited to the walkthrough? PennDOT? We'll follow up.
Okay, all right, yeah. The other thing, on the Buchard Horn report, item one, number one is wastewater treatment plant de-watering improvements. There's, they, Jacob Seacrest had listed performance testing issues. Can he or John specify, is it, is it the production rate, the polymer usage, dry cake, filtrate quality? I mean, what's the, which performance issue are you talking about?
Yeah, that's a good question. So it really relates to percent solids and gallons per minute as well as polymer usage. So while they can achieve the higher percent solids, they're doing that at a lower gallons per minute than what the project said. So they have, they're coming back, I believe, mid-August to evaluate it one more time.
Okay.
I have one more question for you. We had discussed a crosswalk, I think, at Franklin and Main. And we had to wait until they put in the, did the repaving because it, was that done? I haven't been down by. It had to be, what, heat sealed or something?
Basically, we needed the blacktop to be installed first. Now, Main Street requires a PennDOT HOP highway occupancy permit to do those improvements. So that's in process and basically, we need that to happen so that we can do the one in Franklin, too. We're not going to bring the company in to do, do that twice, basically, two mobilizations. So that will be done as soon as we can get that HOP in hand and get it scheduled.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
It's not part of your report, but I had a question for Donnie Swardner with regard to the second item on Buchard Horn's report. As BH advised, New Freedom started dosing the caustics, it says caustic soda ash in small doses as well as number one and four. Have you, I think you probably have, if you talk to Brian Schweitzer at Shrewsbury, because he did, they had the same problem, but he did something different with their caustic addition. But now, are you going to be any caustic or soda ash?
No, we're doing caustic and I'm going by what Derek's doing at Shrewsbury. We're going to try that here because he's not having any problems with it. We're going to try that. We still haven't heard back from DDP yet.
Now, it's been a while. I mean, but you have a permit to add it already, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so if you want to tweak it and just try to do the same thing that Brian's doing, you may eliminate the problem that, you know, the Shrewsbury had with the addition. All right.
I really don't have anything else to add. I was going to do a Act 65 update, but you beat me to it. I mean, this is a great summary, but I would note that, you know, your current agenda tonight was somewhat deficient in that. You took official action on the Crime Intervention Alarm System and it was noted as a public comment item. And therefore, you would have had to gone through the official amendment of your agenda and even to get to a point where you could consider that for official action. So anything that, I can't stress enough that under the new law, anything for deliberation or official action needs to be identified on the agenda. That's pretty onerous. I was reviewing this with another client and the chief says, "Oh, we already advertised our ordinance and put it on the website. We're good and we're doing everything right." And under the agenda, just like here, was chief's report. Well, we got to the chief's report and he identified five action items that he just kept bringing up and I'd like to have action on this and action on that. And I pointed out to the end, I said, "Chief, you need to identify each one of those items." And he said, "Well, it was chief's report." And I said, "That doesn't do it. You know, you have to specifically identify what those items are on the agendas so the public may know what's going to be considered by Borough Council." So as you're going through and in preparation for your meeting, if in fact you know there's going to be things that are going to be deliberated or official action will be taken, make sure you get that to your manager so that he can put that over the agenda.
So what's the remedy if we did it wrong today?
The Act doesn't come into effect till August, so we're good. Yeah, I'm just saying in the future, a lot, and I know all of my municipalities just randomly take additional items, not on the agenda, but they're just going to have to be a little bit more disciplined on the process that they go through either to amend the ordinance, I mean, the agenda or identify a specific exception, be it an emergency or the matter came up within 24 hours of the meeting.
This was the record, Bruce Snarle. Kate Glenn, ready for Mr. Horvath. The Act 65, which you mentioned, applying to Borough Councils, does that also apply then to the actions of all subsidiary organizations, the commissions, the board, the councils?
It's identified to public agencies, which include school districts and all other type of municipal-related entities that are regulated by the Sunshine Act.
All right, next item, engineer, I think that was basically covered under the Buchard Horn paper. Dennis, you can speak to these better than I could, but it really doesn't look like it is anything major.
No, and like I said, I had a question about the performance issues. De-watering equipment has been allowed and usually that's what it comes down to is take dryness percent solids, polymer usage or GPM equipment, which, yeah, it's equipment is size because treatment, treatment plant anticipates having to do solids treatment at a certain rate in the future when the plant's capacity to 250 G. And if it doesn't do that, well, they have a different problem. They may have to run more hours than they anticipated. So, just curious to know about it.
That was monthly report. Franklin and Main is covered. Water system, I don't think there was...
I have one...
I think people filled their poles.
I was going to say, I have one question for Donnie is that we have about a 22% increase from month to month on the water usage. Is it, is it what the mayor is saying, pool filling? Or is it maybe it's just summertime usage because of water, whatever, whatever.
With the next item on the agenda is the wastewater system. Any questions on that?
I guess I have a question for Dennis. I know Andrew and I kind of talked about it a little bit earlier today. Wet tons, sludge, de-water, what do we feel that this de-watering process, the improvement that we've done there is going to perform for us as a money saver? I think we had talked when we started this, that the less water we have, the more, the less tonnage we would have to remove.
Well, yeah, I mean, the drier, the drier you get your material that's de-watered when you have to haul it out from the treatment plant, you know, you're paying by weight, you know. So let's say if you got your, your solids de-watered to 10%, 90% is water. So you're paying to haul 90% of that is water. You're paying to haul water. So for every, every percentage you can tweak that down, it reduces the amount of water and reduces your hauling cost. The other thing is if, if the system is really efficient and polymer is expensive and you don't have to use as much polymer to de-water, the wastewater and treatment plant well, there's money saving there, too. So it's both. The drier you get it, the less polymer you use, saves you money and also the throughput. If they don't get the gallons per minute through that they'd like, that they expect to have, that means the equipment's going to have to run more often. So...
After doing this, what would you expect the percentage of cost to go down?
Oh, I don't know. I'd like to see what, what the, what directional specifications were and what, you know, what they're going to get now. And if they tried to tweak it as far as they can go, all right, so what's that, what's that mean? I mean, we were going to say this once before, now when they tweak it, we're going to say this once. So what, what does that difference mean? Is somebody else on the hook for it? Is somebody else on the hook for it? My, he's equipment vendor or something, I don't know. I know it depends on the contract from Britain.
Thank you.
That was the wastewater. Next item on here is zoning and code enforcement. Everybody should have a packet that they have already reviewed with local infractions, as written by Wade and Andrew. The one that I do want to note on here, and I'm happy to say is in the current process of being resolved, is the one on, not Ball Street, South Third Street. Wade and Patty, I'm sure you guys are happy to see this one. It's a win for Kohler Point, so.
It's a deal.
Yeah.
Is it all the way down now?
All the way down.
I've been over there in a couple days. Down to the foundation.
Not quite, I'm moved.
Okay. All right. Does that just swing the pool?
Yeah.
Maybe that's where all the water went.
That's why they got all the money.
Yeah. All right, Erica?
Erica Rares, New Freedom. I have a follow-up from last month about examples on reporting. Do you want me to talk about that right now or in new business?
You have an update on what?
Andy had asked when I brought up in the meeting on the 14th about reporting and how it's kind of vague in the reporting, and she'd come back with some examples. I have a couple of examples. I don't know if you'd like them now or if you'd like them.
The reporting for what, the code enforcement?
Yeah. And reporting.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the last meeting, so.
So if you like it now or during the new business, you need to speak about it.
What, is it related to the permit report or the code report? I mean, the code report needs to maintain, it needs to maintain its confidentiality through the board because it could result in potential litigation.
Well, I have examples that, like Shrewsbury Township, how that they do theirs, and they present it to their citizens. And then I have how they do the planning and zoning presentation to their citizens and how the information that they give.
Can we just chat after the meeting?
Oh.
Or if you'd like to present it now, then that's up to.
Well, it's during the meeting so that the citizens can hear. Would you like it now or during the business?
Go ahead, we're on that topic, so.
Okay.
The microphone's right there, if you have Erica.
Maybe share two to a person. I have one to go with the minutes. It's not going to take that long. I don't know if you want to take a couple and pass it back, just so that you can know what we're kind of talking about here. So I just have an example here for Shrewsbury Township on the top page. When they have subdivisions and land development activity, they have like four subsections. That shows, you know, new plans, pending plans, not yet approved, approved plans with conditional approval, and the denied plans. So stuff that comes up, such as Mann and Parker, such as Franklin Square. If something like this can be added into our report at the bottom and just updated as needed, that would allow the citizens to know that, okay, we have some building and some development that's going to be in the near future, or, okay, this has been approved now. It's just more of a transparency, causes less communication, or less confusion, more communication with the citizens. And this is taken straight from Shrewsbury Township. And then on the second page, regarding how planning meetings are advertised, New Freedom just puts the code. And with the Mann and Parker recently, that caused a lot of confusion. People didn't know, people didn't want to look. It just caused a lot of things. And I have examples of Shrewsbury Township and Glen Rock that they list what it is for. And I know it might be a slight increase in the printing fee, but I think it adds a level of transparency with the citizens that they understand what it is, like for Mann and Parker, a variance. Well, they want a variance, but for what? Nobody knows, and they've got to go and search out all this stuff. Well, if you kind of put a description of that, just like these surrounding municipalities do, it cuts downs on the confusion for the citizens, and it just is a bit more transparent. And I think it will cut down on problems with.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree with that.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with this, and I apologize, I wasn't sure. But the subdivisions and land development activity, that's something that we can easily put in the packet going forward. We won't have as much, but.
Yeah, yeah, we might not have something there every month.
Yeah, and regarding the notice for the paper, you know, I guess I apologize, I didn't see the example that you used here. I didn't see that go out, but it does need amended to better reflect.
I know that.
And I have examples that I can use if we need to take one forward, so I.
It took me about an hour to look that up and figure out what it was.
And I apologize for that. I didn't, we didn't have any kind of like two-step verification on that before it went to the paper, but we'll fix it.
I'm thrilled with Savvy Citizen, it's great. Tell people about it and to use it. And I know generally, in the paper, we advertise for the planning meetings. But generally, New Freedom does not advertise for zoning meetings in the paper. Is that correct?
Zoning hearing board meetings have to be advertised in the paper.
In the paper?
Yeah.
With my understanding, they had to, but I know they come across Savvy Citizen. And I would take note with Shrewsbury Township, they take one posting, they have both of them. They say, notice Shrewsbury Township Planning Commission Meeting and Zoning Hearing. They give both dates, it's in one, so it's just one running of it instead of having four separate runnings and, you know. And so it's just, I think it's more efficient.
Yeah, I can see that. I definitely agree that this needs to be spelled out like Shrewsbury Township and Glen Rock.
That was, that was interesting, you know, being on the IGC and going around to different municipalities. Kim and I, we see this, and how the calendar generally, Shrewsbury meets before us, but this week, they're meeting after us because of how the calendar falls. And I would highly encourage council members, they're on Zoom, either attend in person or get on Zoom and watch how Shrewsbury Borough, how their meeting works, how, you know, it's interesting to go to different municipalities and see, wow, that's a great way that they do it, and that's like more efficient, and maybe we can bring that on here.
Absolutely. I do think if they are separate meetings, I think that they should be listed separately. I understand what you're saying, but I don't want somebody to just see one meeting listed and then just glance over the other one looking for a date. So I don't, I agree that there is some improvement that we can have. I think this is really great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's the zoning hearing. Recreation, I was not here for the actual meeting, but I do want to say the Gaga Pit has been ordered. This is the Gaga Pit that will be installed by a local Eagle Scout or soon to be Eagle Scout, close to the current playground equipment. Kim, was there anything big or anything from the Red Council that needs to be brought up? Nope?
Is Rich still here?
Rich, Rich, we were here mainly to, we wanted to just make sure the council knew we approved of the.
Yeah, and plans for the, a lot of, a lot of it was planning for the parade, finalizing those things.
Yeah, I was worried about the parade last week.
Making sure we get those things out.
Excellent. Unfortunately, I do not have a date for the Gaga Pit, but it is supposed to be here, I think sometime in August. There was some delays with COVID, getting fundraising done, and also with ordering the material. I don't believe the vendor had it in stock at the time when he wanted to order it. So it has been ordered, more information to come on that. Any other committee? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ryan, Erica Rares, New Freedom. You're talking about the park, and I wanted to ask earlier, the second playground hasn't been put in yet, is that right?
That is correct.
Do you have an idea of when? Is there a timeframe of when it will be?
Yeah, Donnie's, I know he wanted to get through the carnival before we, they would have started construction and then have to rope it off to the carnival, but I think they're anticipating to start here shortly.
That's the one that.
You know, actually, look at the next month, they start to weigh out everything.
That's the one that was done through private donations and local businesses?
Yes.
And Berquentin is donating manpower, is that correct? Am I wrong about that? That's just.
Yes, yeah. Public disguises.
All right, so you're saying that the Gaga Pit is going to be here for a while?
The date that he mentioned to me the other day when I talked to him was August.
Okay. When he called, he asked me about where the location where it would be delivered. I told him to have it delivered to Sadres, but he didn't say it would take a while to cut it.
Okay, you were expecting it sooner than later?
Yeah, I thought it would have been here by now when he called me.
Okay.
The way he sounded in the message, I don't get it, although he left me a message.
Okay. I'll reach out to Maddox and see if he has one. Are you?
I can text them right now.
What's your name and address, please?
Ross, New Freedom. I can text Maddox right now.
Okay. All right. Hit her, powder, let's get at her. I like to embarrass my daughter sometimes.
I shouldn't have come tonight, you should have been on your own.
Hey, this might be the last time. All right, I'm sorry, other committees, anything else?
Did I make a comment before about, we had a complaint about foxes? Anybody else have a problem with foxes? I talked, well, you live out in the woods. You made it, you've got it over there. Surprised the bear hasn't eaten it so far. But game commission, when it comes to foxes, we can't just hire anybody to capture a fox, take them someplace, let them go. Some people can cage them, they have to destroy them. We have, and I've passed this on to our manager, we have in York County several places that have a special license, which is required by the state and the game commission. If there's a fox problem, infestation kits that need to be removed. We have their names, phone numbers, addresses that they can be contacted if somebody is having an extreme problem. I know we have one lady that swears she's got a video of a fox carrying a kitten, you know, and she's very upset about that. So I don't know, is that something that the borough takes care of, or does the individual?
Let's see individuals.
It is, the individual. Okay, so if people see this, that's an individual problem. We have the phone numbers, the names, if you need them, please call the borough office.
All right. You?
And that he hasn't ordered it yet, but he needs to make one more call, and the estimated arrival date is early August.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that was it for committees. Any other business? I don't think there was any.
Everything was handled like June 30th.
Okay. Any new business?
Right. So a borough resident asked me to bring this up. Apparently, there's a thing that people do in different towns called a town-wide or a borough-wide yard sale, where they waive the fees on one day, and a whole bunch of people, a lot more people than normal would do a yard sale, which gets people out and about, you know, more chance of doing it. I just wondered if there was, if there was interest in doing something like that here, or if people have seen it before.
I have heard about it. What would we have to do from a borough standpoint?
Shrewsbury's just had, right? Shrewsbury's just had, I think, yards.
It's by ordinance, but I think you, the borough council could probably pass a motion, waiving for a one-day, you know, borough-wide yard sale.
All right, so the next question would be, how do we decide on the date?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we make a motion?
Should we?
And then get a date after that. Or do we have to do all together?
Yeah, I think it'd probably be a quick review, so you have, as part of the miniature, identifying the date that is waived, so it's official action specific.
Yeah. Or I was going to say, because the Lions Club does one, or do they still do it at the park?
Don't you have one scheduled up at the park or up at the?
I thought they were doing one at the park and then they did one in the winter at indoor.
What's the one in November?
They used to, but they don't anymore. November's a Christmas craft, a vendor show that we're doing, that the Lions has done, so we're doing that, but not the craft show.
And this year, Shrewsbury had a major one, and they sold, that was for the fire company.
Right.
Right. Okay, that was just a couple weeks ago.
That was for the Lions, they did it at the firehouse. But we don't have one anymore because our chairperson is not here.
We don't have lionesses anymore either, right? Yes.
They're together?
They're together.
All right, let's, we can regroup all now for the next one.
We're not yet there.
It's still good.
All right. So any new business correspondence?
Other than the notification received about Act 65.
Okay. All right, executive session, there was none needed today. And then public comment.
I have a public comment. Mayor made the point that we spent, yeah, a quarter million bucks on the park down there, which includes grading and grass planting. And I didn't get down and walk around to take a look, but I drove by tonight, took it back. I see a lot of brown grass, brown lanes except where, I don't know if the grass is gone there, but I guess my question is, it doesn't have to be answered now. Who's responsible for repairing, restoring? That comes a lot of, if you look at square footage, a lot of square footage down here, if it's brown grass or missing grass, something's got to get fixed.
They have a contract with the company. They did that before they even planned the event, the carnival. Remember Wayne who that is?
Clearview.
Clearview. They have a contract with Clearview to come in and repair any damages to the park, receive if they have to, or what have you. You know, I know there's still a lot of trash, geez, there's still a bunch of trailers they haven't pulled out yet. You know, they're running a little bit late. I'm sure they'll be out middle of the week. I know I'm planning on going down tomorrow and cleaning up some other trash. Unfortunately, I did see one of their trucks pull out late morning, and before he pulled out, he just opened the door and threw all his trash out on the park. So that's going to go back to grade of all, and as a complaint. I will be honest with you, I talked to the owner of the company earlier in the year when we were trying to set this up, where everything has to go, and he had a terrible time just getting warm bodies. It's been tough, you know? You're looking at minimum wage, it's not an easy job. Not any, I don't think anybody here would want to travel with a carnival. I did it for a summer with a circus and would never do it again. But he had a real hard time, and I know he apologizes for any inconsistencies, let's say, in service that we're used to with their company. But they also have a liability policy. We have that here, we have Lions insurance policy, and like I said, they've already contracted with a company to take care of that.
What were you, when you traveled with service?
I played the tuba and I was a Swartz law. A human blockhead, they called me. They still do it, oh.
Cheryl, now, some new freedom. Speaking of the carnival, you do realize, you do realize that no one handicapped can really attend that carnival because the gravel is so thick, you could not push a wheelchair. Some of us people with one leg cannot walk in that gravel, it's too thick. Why in God's name didn't they put a path? Maybe like pave a path or blacktop? And I know that's a lot of money, you know, but I just want you to be aware that it is not for anybody who is handicapped, that part.
Okay. So I didn't actually go to the carnival, and I haven't been down there in quite some time. No, I didn't get my funnel cake, I'm not happy. The gravel specifically around the bandstand, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then any way to get in, you know, either you've got to come down the flight of steps.
Down the stairs, which.
And the Lions Club, and because I drove by like 50 times because I was trying to figure out a way I could get in.
Yeah.
And the Lions Club, they take all the prime parking, and I understand they're older, most of them are elderly guys. They are, I've watched them go to the bathroom. Because I have a parking place where I have to put my. They're the bathroom, because I have a parking place where I can go back and forth, you know? So I'm not complaining about that. Why in God's name can't they park offside or in the back there where the ride people are and walk up and leave those handicapped spaces and the spaces that are marked off that have equipment laying on the grass for somebody who cannot walk to the carnival?
Yeah, that's a very valid point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty?
So I think, yeah, I was gonna say, so we do have two lines here. And the other comment I did want to make is that I've seen a lot of things going around on Facebook seeming to think that the borough planned the carnival, when in fact they did not. That is the Lions Club's biggest, am I correct? It is their biggest fundraiser from, during the year out of everything that they do.
We make our money for the community.
Yep, and I was gonna say, and all that money goes back to the community through scholarships and other programs.
We say that Dan Filer is the gentleman that has all the equipment down there, okay? He did get his roller and he did roll all that stone to pack it tight.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still stone.
It's still loose, right, but he did pack it out. Tuck it down from bingo area and the food.
Yeah, I mean, you put a couple hundred, couple thousand people walking around, it's just gonna get loose.
It's gonna get loose.
Yeah.
So I'll make note of that just so I know, because I had to park in front, because I had, well, I parked in the back lot. I only saw one handicapped space down there. Is there more than one? Because one of our gentlemen is handicapping, so he parked there. So is there more than one? Dump space and there is one elsewhere. I'll make note.
I was gonna say, if you guys, if you guys want to go ahead and sidebar after the meeting.
I'll make note, okay.
The last, last comment I had before I'm done is just thank you for everybody for bearing with me. This is the first time I've ever done anything like this, so thank you. And with that...
Motion, U. J.
I was just gonna say, and with that being said, do we have a motion? We have a second from Burnell. Do you need to vote? Aye.